So, good morning. This is January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five, and Knox County Commissioners' meeting. And so we will start, call to order our, our meeting at this time. I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good morning. My name is Bethany Solmar. I'm the Transit Director for Knox County. So my role is to administer the organization that provides transportation for the county, and it's public transportation for anyone all across the county, as well as some out-of-county services. So I have some statistics to update you. Being that we're at the beginning of the year, I wanted to update you on how December went, but also give you a little bit more of a full-year recap as we kind of look at what we did in two thousand twenty four, what we can do better in two thousand twenty five. So, um, at the first, I wanted to just start with December. I, we had a total number of trips of eight thousand two hundred twenty. That's a little bit lower than a normal month. We saw a lot of trips fall off in the last two weeks during that Christmas break time. So we certainly, we ran Kenyon on limited, a limited schedule, and that took trips away. And then, uh, well, because the students weren't there. And, um, around the holidays, I, we just feel, we seem to find that people have family in town, so then they're able to get rides a little bit more. Um, so people just start to kind of cancel their rides. Also, work can be closed down for some of those, those times. So, um, I did want to give you that, um, split out of the general public versus the elderly and disabled. Um, we had the general public rides were two thousand four hundred seventeen, and the elderly and disabled were two thousand four hundred twenty six. So that is almost a even split between who we are serving. So we've got general public, we've also got elderly and disabled. Um, that does not, so those counts don't count our contracted rides or the Kenyans. So those are just the, the rides that way. So that's why that doesn't add up to eight thousand. I gave you a chart to split out trips by purpose, just to show you that in December, we, uh, maintained our, um, trip purpose count and percentage. We are at thirty-seven percent employment and seventeen percent medical. Um, and then the education is three percent, and the shopping was about nine percent. So, um, we have remained steady in the second half of the year about that being our trip purpose, very, very heavily, um, employment rides, as well as what we're providing.
Kenyon being the second largest percentage, it looks like eighteen. Is that education, or is that just people riding from Kenyon to Mount Vernon?
That's a good question. Um, it would really be the, the split between the daytime and the evening. I'd have to look at those numbers. The daytime is a shuttle to the Wright Center, um, for classes. So that would be education. Um, the evening would be mostly shopping or, or eating out. So the thing with the fixed routes, the difficulty is that we don't track specifically who is riding, and we don't track their purpose. There's no way to do it because someone's just showing up to a stop, and they're not gonna have the driver, you know, type it into their tablet. So, so we lose that data point. Um, we can know how many people rode, and we know how many trips. But certainly, if students are going from the bookstore to a classroom, we probably can assume that those are, the daytime is education. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Great question. Um, so then I also wanted to give you a year in review for two thousand twenty four. Uh, we did a total of one thousand five hundred, uh, sorry, one, one hundred five. Yes, one hundred five thousand, two hundred forty-two. I want to make it more. No, we, we broke the hundred thousand mark, which is really, really good. We did not last year. So I gave you a trip comparison for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and two thousand twenty-four. Um, and we are pretty much straight on even with two thousand twenty-two, where we were trip providing-wise, so.
And those are trips. That's not people.
It's not people, but we will get, actually, that's my next point. Yes. So that is trips. Um, you know, the question can be, what, do you just have one person riding a hundred and five thousand times, you know? So what you really want to know is, who are we serving? How many people are we serving? Um, so what I have is, um, a breakdown of general public riders. I have, I was able to pull a report, and that's two thousand forty-one people. We also do group trips, and so we had four thousand two hundred forty people who were provided transportation through a group trip or an event. Um, that's event shuttling. Um, that is, I mean, there could be some overlap, but most likely, those are a completely different group of people. That's a, a different section of the population because they're part of a group that is taking a field trip versus regular riders. So then here's the other fun trip, trip count back to Kenyon. We had twelve thousand twenty-five trips for Kenyon. Um, again, I don't know how to, I don't know how many people that is, because we don't track it. Um, some of those also could be overlapped individuals with the group trips, because we do group trips for Kenyon. But I do think it is safe to say we probably are serving about a thousand Kenyon students, I, you know, from that kind of a trip count. Um, it's an estimate, but looking at those numbers, uh, if you, if you add that up, we are serving about ten percent of the Knox County population at a minimum, at a very conservative estimate. It's probably more like eleven to twelve percent of people are on our bus at some point during the year for some purpose. So, that is a significant.
Ten percent, then would be six thousand people.
Yeah, so that's what I, those, those group individuals are different than our regular riders. So you add that up, that's six thousand two hundred eighty-one. And then an estimate for Kenyon, you know, that's, that's not including the Kenyon students that we're serving, so.
And what would be some of those groups, for instances, whether the names are like.
Well, I will, um, I'll flip over. Um, so we have a few senior groups that do field trips. They went to the fair. Um, we had, uh, a cosi trip for a, a kids group. Um, there's a daycare in town that uses us. Um, so Kenyon uses us for field trips for classes. So we've taken them to the wastewater treatment plant, um, KCH, you know, different classes that they're looking at things that are going on in our community. Um, also, there are shuttles for events, so that also is included in that. Um, we did, I think, a shuttle for Kenyon for the Johnny Appleseed, um, event downtown. We were going to do a First Friday, but that First Friday got canceled in September. Um, and then we did the Fire and Ice event in December, which is where they put candles out at the Honey Run Falls. And, um, so I actually do have the, the counts for that. There was four hundred seventy-one people that rode us that night, or for those, that time. So, um, let's see, what else? Um, there is a program called Transition U in the community, and it's for folks with disabilities, and it's like a work program, so we do their transportation. Um, and then we do a lot of transportation for nursing homes as well. So that's not necessarily groups, but we do their transportation.
You're thinking, and you use your adult?
They, they did this year. Um, they had an event where they needed extra help with transportation. They had, I think it was like a, a global conference at, at their location. And so we got people home in the evening. Um, I've been talking to them about having a route or having some sort of service. So we talked about that at the beginning of the year, and then it just didn't go anywhere. So, um, I will be reaching out to them again. They do have a shuttle that runs.
I was gonna say, do they provide their own?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, we, Kenyon uses us, so.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, it's different, I guess, you know, weighting the, the costs and benefit analysis of having your own buses and mechanic versus just utilizing our services. Um, uh, yeah, so I, I, yeah, there's a lot of different factors to, to think about. I would love to have a stop at MBNU and try to loop the students in. Um, they, uh, received a lot. They have, um, they had an increase of students because I believe they had a sister college that had shut down. And so they had several people kind of coming in at the beginning of the year, and from more like out of state, not people that don't have cars on campus, um, and a few students with disabilities. So we had some really good conversations. Um, we haven't seen a, a big increase in that, but I do hope to foster that in a few years.
What about COTC?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, they're downtown. Um, I haven't had any conversations with them about getting people to events or to classes. Um, it's definitely something that I'm thinking of, though. It's a need, and it's something that we want people to get an education, and we want to open that up for folks. Um, same with the Career Center and the Technical Center there. Um, trying to think of how to have that as a stop and when it's needed, so that that opens up access to folks in town to be able to hop on the bus and get classes.
So do we just keep, uh, one of our buses at Kenyon and run it constantly? Because it sounds like they're really our number one user.
Right. No, I mean, we just keep it at the garage, and we just schedule as needed. Um, our, our route starts around ten-thirty, and then it ends at eight-thirty. Um, so we have two different buses. It's, we've split it into two different shifts, and we just have.
But you're also running routes as you do that Kenyon thing.
Yeah, that's the Kenyon routes, and then they also, as needed, schedule group trips with us, so.
Well, we have like a, a route we do at Kenyon during the day that's every day for certain times, but we're not doing that in the city.
Not yet.
Sometimes we would do it the other way. We would have started in her own city and then worked out.
Right, right. Well, I think Kenyon approached transit, now this is way before I was there. I mean, this was years ago. I think I found documents from two thousand fourteen, maybe, twenty, maybe twenty-twelve, but I think at least two thousand fourteen, there was a route for Kenyon.
And we have a contract with Kenyon to do that service for them.
Right, right, and that's.
And they pay us.
Yeah, that is where we get a, we're from a local match for, so that has sustained us for many years. So that's been a really advantageous partnership, so it's been really great. Um, and we've seen a lot of ridership increase this year, so we were working on that and working on that route. Um, so.
But that route, though, stops down to Wright Center, it goes, does it still go to the square?
Not during the daytime.
Okay, but there's, it, does it go to Kroger's, that same route, or not?
So during the daytime, it goes from the bookstore to the Wright Center and back, because the feedback we got was, it, it, it's taking too long to get around, so students are gonna use that for classes. So we shortened it to be basically a half hour, fifteen minutes back and forth. So it is more of a shuttle to downtown. Um, now, when we do roll out the other fixed routes, students will be able to connect in downtown to get out to the shopping area during the day. Um, in the evening at four, I mean, I guess it's afternoon, at four, we start the Kroger, Walmart, Public Square, Kenyon Bookstore route. So we still give daily access, but it's just in the evening. It's not all day. So what we found again is that by having so many stops in it, it was an hour loop, and we just didn't get a lot of ridership, because it's not, it just doesn't work with the schedules.
I have a question. How many units are in your fleet?
Yeah, um, because I'm, I'm thinking, okay, so we have about thirty, we have thirty vehicles. Um, we have two that are down right now. Um, six of those are vans. No, five of those are vans now, because we said, we're trying to sell one. And six of them are CDL buses, so that, that requires a CDL driver. Now, we have a handful of CDL drivers, but not everyone is. So, um, as far as those nine-seat smaller buses, we have twenty-four of those. So.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
And that, yes, Bethany, we won't dive into all that today, but that Kenyon route's important, because we are required to have a certain, not a local match.
Sure.
Um, to get our funding, so those contracts are, are important to have. Some community partners, obviously, the county is a, a partner, which we can use that for match. The city, uh, provides a little bit of funding, and, and that's a match. So those are where we, we really, it's difficult to get the local match we need in order to leverage the state and federal funds that we can get from those local matches.
Yeah.
So on the TANF and the NET.
Yes.
Um, so I know that we, we can get some, um, federal monies for that. Is, does that same per TANF, too? Do we get monies?
Yes, I believe so. So, um, those are all the same rate, um, with job and family services. Um, and then the TANF basically is, um, us picking up students and dropping them off at Salvation Army every day. That's pretty much what it is.
And that's Pleasant Street students. Is that Dana two or not?
Um, no, it's Columbia. There's Columbia and Pleasant Street. Yeah. So, um, so that's why I also included some of these trip counts with the contracted programs, because contract money, um, that is, the FTA designed our funding to require contracts and require local match before we can access our federal funding. So, um, we're always trying to watch this and trying to have as many contractor trips as we can. So basically, that is defined as an organization that is paying for or sponsoring the ride. So the federal money that we receive is supposed to offset the cost for the general public rider. Joe Smith, who's getting on, he's going to work every day, and he's pulling the money out of his pocket. That's what our federal money is supposed to bring that cost of the ride down. For the organizations in town, the federal government doesn't want to subsidize that. They want them to pay the fully allocated cost. It's called fully allocated cost, which is fancy word for what it actually costs for us to run. So, um, that is a ongoing conversation with organizations, because they see our fairs, and then they see our contract rate, and they don't understand why they're paying a different rate. And yes, it's more, because a subsidized rate is going to be lower than a full rate. Um, so that is the challenge, is, um, getting enough organizations on board to understand that this is community support, it's supporting the transit, and it is paying for the full cost of the ride, but it is supporting the entire system for that. So these are, I've kind of grouped some folks together just to show you who is riding with us in a contract basis. So we do have four different, um, kind of, I don't know, lines, topics for the, um, job and family services. They have a couple different programs, but just showing you what the count is for Ohio means jobs, children's services, TANF, NET.
The initials TAN.
Okay, temporary assistance for needy families.
Okay, thank you.
Funding comes through job.
Job and family services.
Several governments.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, so NET, yes, NET, and that's, yeah, it's non-emergency medical transportation. They really should call it NIMT, but that really doesn't sound very good, so, um, they shortened it. So yes, it's the non-emergency medical, so that's for people on Medicaid. Anybody on Medicaid can sign up for that, and they can get free transportation to a medical, medically-related trip. Um, that can be doctor's office, it can be therapy, it can be the pharmacy. Um, as long as they get a, there's a sign sheet, so the doctor has to sign off, or the pharmacist has to sign off. So, why I separated that out, most other transits have enough contract income and enough trips that they can solely run off of their non-emergency medical transportation. Um, I've talked to other, uh, county transit directors. Um, they're bringing in three hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thousand a year, um, down in Zanesville. Now, they're like the example, but there's two, there's two counties. It's Muskingham and Guernsey. They do a million dollars a month in non-emergency. Yeah, a month, a month, so, um, that is Medicaid funding. So we are in a different situation here, because our trips don't make up that much of, of, um, our total trips, and it's not bringing in that total, um, contract money, though.
People know that exists. You know, I mean, just, is there a way to get that population to know that they actually can be? I can't imagine there's not a lot of elderly people around the city that don't, I mean, you know, I mean, it wouldn't take advantage of that. It don't know, I know my parents don't know about it.
Right, right, um, and that's.
Can drive, but.
Exactly, right. You'd rather them hit, um, yes, I mean, I think, um, you know, it, it's, it's a job and family services program, and they do their best, but I know that they are stretched really thin, so I don't know what they have been able to put towards marketing and getting the information out. Um.
Bethany and I did meet with them multiple times last year, job and services, and we do have a new contract in place, which has helped a little bit, but it's still not, we're not getting the volume that we thought that maybe we would get to help with funding.
And do we know Medicaid caseworkers, and have we made them aware of it? And also, maybe the doctor at the hospital?
Right.
postings, because anybody that's getting Medicaid at the hospital seems like they can say, and by the way, we have this service in Knox County. Would you like to sign up for it?
Exactly.
If you look at our aging population.
Yeah. Doesn't make sense. We don't have it, because we have.
Right, so, and I was in a meeting with, um, the hospital, and the head of the case workers, the case managers, um, mentioned that. She was like, yeah, I need to get more information about that. So, um, you know, I don't know if it's a matter of, like, designing and having a really easy handout. Um, I don't think that's happening right now, um, but it's definitely, you know, and advantageous for me to figure out how I can promote that for them, you know, and get the word out, so.
Because that's what actually is carrying these other transit programs, right?
Yes, yes, and that is, that, that's.
It's Medicaid dollars, too.
Yeah.
And we may not have the Medicaid population that these other places have, so if you say it's not just hourly, they had to be on Medicaid.
Medicaid versus Medicare.
Right.
The numbers should probably, with our aging population, they probably shouldn't skew much different than other rural counties.
That's what I don't know, right, so.
You'd probably be surprised.
Yeah.
Because of the, the income and like.
Right.
Are incomes too high?
Higher than Guernsey, for sure. Yeah, so that I see on the nursing, three thousand trips there.
Yes.
So do the nursing homes, uh, compensate us for that? Or do we check out the Medicaid, whether we're doing a Medicaid person from the nursing home?
Yes, yes, so if it is somebody that's Medicaid eligible, they should be on the program and getting that rate. Um, so, I mean, a lot of times, we don't have that information, so I don't know if the rider is Medicaid eligible or not. So these are just folks that they are booking the rides, with a lot of them are for, um, dialysis, and, um, that's three days a week, so that those rides add up very, very quickly.
And you talked before about, uh, when you do the dial, dialysis people, and, and, uh, how those, those people who are getting that and being served, that they want CAT to be there. I can't say CAT anymore, because we're KCT now. But it's right, and it doesn't always match up when the, you know, come here right now type scenario, and that's been an ongoing issue for us.
It has.
Interesting to know the numbers, Medicaid folks we have, because there's, those numbers exist.
Right.
Then we'd be able to look at, here's how many, and here's what percentage of those that we're serving, and how do we bridge that, right?
Exactly.
Because otherwise, financially, it doesn't look, the numbers don't look, you know, you know, you look at this and you go, wow, thirty vehicles, two thousand people, you know, that's.
Right.
I know you're doing an amazing job trying to bridge that, but it just seems like, now that we know that this Medicaid funding is a real important piece of it.
Right.
How we could find out how many people are actually receiving Medicaid in our county, and how we, how we get talk to those people, right?
Yes, exactly, how we can help them out and get that information out. I think that has been, um, the biggest challenge. It's probably not unique to us, but getting information out and getting that, getting good materials, good information, um, in the hands of the people that need it, when they need it. Um, huge challenge, huge challenge. So absolutely, um, something that's on the agenda. We are working on different, um, communication, uh, initiatives for this year. And, um, so that, yeah, that is something that we're going to be working on. Um, so I, I think also just the trips, you know, these contractor trips, just to show you that lots of people are using us, they're using us incidentally, so it's not bringing in a lot, um, of income, but it is being used in that we do have an impact on the community. We are here, and we are someone that, okay, we need transportation. Who do we call? Let's call.
And it's a big service. We just want to make it success, you know, that's what you're working. You know how the other counties, um, partner to get that Medicaid funding, communication?
I can check.
Yeah, we never ask, how is it you guys are giving these people?
Right, right, I know, right.
Are you partnering with the hospital? Are you partnering?
Right.
They may have some kind of relationship worked out, where they go, hey, we'll come to the hospital this many times. If you'll refer this to, you know, help us get the Medicaid.
Brenda, one, one of the things is Medicaid starts with job and family services, so.
And we have worked with them about, I would say, myself and the Commissioner's Office have spoke to JFS about the importance of this issue, that we need to address it, and they need to help partner.
Sure.
With that, and so, um, that's where we worked on the new contract rate and those kind of things with them. And Bethany mentioned, we're, we're, we are, Beth and I are working with a marketing firm in Columbus that is kind of helping us redo the website to make all of the requirements that we have to have uh, for accessibility and all that on there. But the issue with that is, which the firm that keeps talking about, you know, you, when we talk about marketing with an app and things like that, that's great for a certain population.
Genre, yeah.
But we, but they keep talking about, you know, how are we gonna address what they call our legacy riders? The riders that have been with us for years, that maybe are our older population that, that uses transportation. How do we get the message to them? And that's what we're really working on. So you, you have two different marketing strategies, um, that, that you have to address, and that's what gets a little difficult about trying to get the information out. Um, so we're, we're gonna have rack cards that are gonna be at the hospital and nursing facilities and job and family services and social service organizations, but because they're not gonna probably go to the website for an app and get that information. Those bases to get that information out as best we can to everyone. Especially when we talk about fixed routes, and where are those routes, and the timing of those routes? How do you get that information out to everybody? And it's proving difficult, and they're helping us. We're making strides, uh, that we wanted to have that ready before the new, uh, building was.
Wish we thought it was gonna.
I wish it was gonna be, yeah. But yeah, and I, I mean, I think, I think it's just, yes, communication is hard, right? It is, and, and I think probably every county department, and I don't want to speak for them, but I would say probably all of them would say, yes, we are looking at how we can communicate better. How can we do it? How can we, what can we put together? What can we print? What can we get out there? And I think also, it can be one of those things that it's not quite as much of a pressing issue, so it gets, you know, it just gets put. It's just easy to get put away. And, um, I know for us, that has been, so first, I've only been there two years. So my first year was a lot of learning. There was a lot of information, and boy, wow, that was a year. There was a lot of information and boy, wow, that was a year, but so.
And you've done a great.
Thank you, and we're we're definitely not where I would like us to be communication wise or program wise. Um, this is where we are, this is where we start and we just take it one day at a time, but for us. There there is a lot of misinformation in the community, there's a lot of old information, that's just not accurate anymore. And so we are focusing twenty twenty fives a year. We're getting the building, we're, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do it.
Sheriff's gonna put it into paper, what would she need to say in there, what would be the statement she needs to tell people that they know they can get this?
For for the non emergency medical consultation, um, yes, I, there is, if you're on Medicaid. There is a number, I did not bring the phone number today, but there is a hotline, there's actually a hotline set up. At J F S, so I'm just creating a ton of work for job and family services, sorry.
That brings in a ton of money, which gives us the ability to continue to service.
You owe them all doughnuts or something. And I will let you know, I don't, I think we might have had an article of you uh before, but um. And and it never hurts to inquire, you know, inquire on it and that, and it just opens up that, it's cause it's medical. You you're not gonna hesitate to book that follow up appointment, you're gonna get that preventative care, that's the whole point of this is to. Eliminate that barrier that I can't get there um and and get people to the pharmacy and all of that. So yes, I will, I will look up the number and be owing lunch.
Your job is just to sign people up for transit.
Well, Bethany, thank you.
Doing a great job.
I appreciate that and uh thank you for coming in.
Alright, thank you.
I think Kyle's outside. Yes, Kyle.
Hi, morning, how are you?
So Kyle, Kyle Webb from our I T department is here, this is monthly uh report, thank you, Kyle. And it's getting shorter.
Yes, yes, uh long history of them being extremely long, trying to shorten them a little bit for you. Um, we've been busy uh since my my last update in December. Uh we've installed um many new computers, some soil and water, uh public defender, uh commissioner's office. Uh we've been assisting maintenance with moving desks and things to do the HVAC work, so. Having to disconnect the computers, help them move desks and then reconnect and then move them back once the HVAC works done. Um, we had Spectrum in here and they upgraded our fiber optic cabling. That goes from the building to their pole for service, that is to um allow us to have a faster internet speed overall. So we upgraded our internet here at the county building, we also upgraded some of the connections to the sheriff's office, the city. Um, some of those, so that fiber optic cabling had to be redone to meet the new speeds, that was kind of a. A challenge, it took a lot longer than anyone ever intended, they told us, you know, half hour, hour. And I think they started at five o'clock and Jared was here with them till one in the morning. So it was, it was quite the challenge, but it's taken care of and it's all done now, uh thankfully. Um, we have upgraded speed here and at the sheriff's office. Uh we've installed new networking equipment at the city, they purchased some uh new network equipment with their ARP F funds that they had left over. So we've been rolling that out, they've needed that for a while. Uh they also ordered about fifty four computers at the end of the year uh with the remaining ARP F funds that they needed. And so we have them all upstairs, we're getting them prepped to install, I know some users are asking, hey, when's my computer coming in? And we're just, you know, be patient, we've got fifty four of these to to deploy along with all the county PCs too. So um well over sixty.
Not like a lump order, huh?
Yeah, yeah, but we've done a good job here, um, you know, when I came in. Uh I first started here, we had to do something similar, we ordered uh some like sixty computers all at once because. So many were outdated and they have to be upgraded before Windows seven went out of service, all that. Um but since then, we've kind of gone on a rotation, so we only have to buy a certain percentage of computers each year. So we're not doing one large capital expenditure every five years, so we're trying to do that with the city as well. Um we'll work that plan out with them. Um, and we did the upgrades here for the live stream setup and it seems like it's working pretty good.
You did great.
Um, it's been a a new interesting uh challenge, but I'm glad it's it's working on. It was nice to kind of learn some of the new technologies out there like this device, um it's pretty new to the market, so. It saves us from having to have multiple cameras and someone. Throwing switches and uploading it all, so it's great to see that they have that kind of thing out for meetings like this. Uh it's called an owl, that's the company, they're from Owl Labs, um. Yeah, you would expect something like this maybe from like a Logitech or one of the bigger names, but this is a. A smaller company that developed it and came out and it's really taken off.
O W L?
Yeah, it, yeah, when you turn it on it, and it has two little eyes, that's blink.
And it's motion detection?
Yeah, so um it's got a three sixty camera, a fish eye lens, and then it uses software to like straighten it out across the top there. And then it uses uh like facial tracking to know who's talking and. Keep it focused on the last people that's uh recently talked, so you're not just looking at everyone.
Someone in China is not monitoring.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's not, not doing facial recognition, it's just doing uh tracking, so.
I think the company's out of Boston?
Yeah.
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 It's an American company.
Yeah, 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 always good to see.
They do now.
Um, ongoing projects, uh like I said, the computer replacements, that's definitely on there. Uh we are beginning our annual state audits, the state comes in and they they do audits for the auditor's office. Treasurers' office, clerk of courts, uh and there's always computer uh information technology, information security aspects to those. So we have to um give them uh information related to, you know, what our systems were set up. And our users and that sort of thing, our policies, procedures, so every year we do that and it starts usually. Uh first week of January, so we're already got meetings going with the state to get them their information. Um, and then we're always continuing to update, you know, our security monitoring, uh our controls. That we have in place, last year we made some large uh upgrades so that everyone's on. You know, multi factor authentication, logging your computer, uh some with uh email, uh. Protecting our uh virtual network, uh V P Ns, uh those types of things that we've deployed across uh the county. Especially uh leads requirements required, the multi factor for the sheriff's office and nine one one, and so those were all deployed. Um so it's, it's been, uh we've been making lots of progress, we have a twenty four seven monitoring service now. Uh that oversees our um uh. Alerts for anything unusual after hours when we're not here to to look at it, um and they'll. You know, call me or text me or whatever if needed, uh if there's some kind of incident, usually it's something where. We'll even get alerted if a user is always in Mount Vernon, but let's say they went to Florida for vacation. I'll get an alert that says, hey, you know, Bill Purcell went down to uh Florida and just logged in. Just to alert you that if someone were to get his password, and I know like, okay, no Bill's in the office tomorrow, he can't be in Florida, then I could. You know, throw a flag, lock out his account and investigate, but it's a pretty neat little system.
So basically, you're on call twenty four seven.
Yes, well, uh we're always on call twenty four seven, especially with uh nine one one in the sheriff's office. Uh those are very important uh things that we have to always keep in touch. Uh we had several incidents with nine one one in December, just um. Little issues here and there, a lot of it was just uh, one was like fiber optic cabling that caused some minor disruption and we came in. After hours, we had staff here and we worked it out and it was all resolved and it didn't really. Disrupt anything too major, but it was enough that we needed to attack it as soon as we could, um so that was taken care of. Uh we have ongoing uh upgrades for a couple servers, auditors, treasurers' office and the clerk of courts that schedule with their vendors. So we're just kind of waiting on the vendors to get with us when they can migrate their software. Um, our access control system to the building is being upgraded, I have not gotten an update as to when. Uh custom wired is projecting the installation of that, uh but it will be uh sometime soon, cause I know he was ordering the equipment in the fall.
So he was in last week and I think it's getting close to. Having that ready to go.
So that will, that will be good, our our current system is uh at max capacity. Uh the company that installed it has told us, or not installed it, that uh built the system and sells it. We were basically the largest client that uses the system and we've seen minor issues here and there with certain doors not unlocking. When they're supposed to, and so this new system will alleviate some of that. Um and then we have, uh it's been on the list for a little while, but sheriff's office, we uh want to replace how they do their video arrangements. Uh just upgrade the system, uh their current system's a little bit antiquated, it works, but uh. We have to pay for support and things like that, with the new system, we wouldn't have to to do that, so we're we're looking into that. Uh nine one one, we've got some new computers to install down there, we are mostly waiting on uh deploying their multi factor authentication. Before we put the new computers in, uh tackle one problem at a time. And then the sheriff's office, they've been looking for uh a different system for fax instead of using regular telephone lines. There's other systems out now that can use internet or cellular uh systems to receive faxes. Because uh regular phone lines are becoming more and more uh inefficient and they go down actually more often than. You know, they're less reliable than cellular, back in the day, it was the opposite, telephone lines were, you know, the gold standard for emergencies. You know, those were the least likely, uh but now they're aging so much that uh. Large rainfall, wind will affect those systems a lot more and uh there's a less requirement for the phone companies to keep them up. Uh, so.
Are they using those fax machines for security reasons?
Yeah, they have to use fax for uh things like leads, stuff that needs to be encrypted normally through email. They they're allowed to fax for like war information that style, so we have to. Kind of still use fax machines, which sometimes feels a little antiquated, but yeah.
As I said, when we were taking our walk last week, you'll find that our I T, Kyle and his staff are very knowledgeable on all these. Technologies that we have going between nine one one, the sheriff's office, we do have contracts, obviously, you know, with the city. The village of Fredericktown, the police department of Fredericktown, Fredericktown EMS and the village of Gambier, we have contracts that take care of I T. For those as well, so um. And we do have a meeting, Kyle and I have a meeting this afternoon with the city just to kind of go over the contract, talk about that. And real progress, we were paid yesterday by the city, so we were paid within one month, that's the first time that's ever happened, they took the contract. So um, real progress.
Minor miracle.
Yeah.
We love you, city.
Great progress.
So I know this, the city did uh wanted to have wifi accessibility on Main Street, you know. Have you guys been involved with that?
I mean, they they've had it, they've had it for two years now.
Couple of years at least.
And every once in a while, there'll be an issue and we'll, you know, resolve it, uh we haven't had to work with it too much at this point. Um it's relatively stable, um but there are some things that we wanna tweak with that system, um but. Nothing, nothing too major, but it seems to work decently well.
And then same thing for the fairgrounds, I think last year you worked on that to to get so that people at the fairgrounds would be able to have wifi access.
Yeah, we got them, uh, yeah, we finally got them a a good and stable internet connection out at the fairgrounds, worked the spectrum. And custom wired has assisted them with getting, you know, access points and things uh. Installed so people can have access during the fair, they used to bring in this like mobile trailer that would. Uh for wifi and it costs a lot of money and it wasn't that great, so. We were able to put this system in and basically for one year of cost of that, we could put this whole system in, so.
And then over to Memorial Theater, our wifi for people when we.
Yeah, Aaron came in and I worked with him and he deployed access points. We kind of need to err on that because just being historical, we wanna make sure that everything's run and kind of hidden out of sight, so you're not kind of seeing these. Big access points, we're able to go with more of a, usually they're kind of round. Um but we thought that might look a lot of place, they have uh square units that are pretty indistinguishable from a fire system or anything of that. So those is, that's what we installed and they have ones that are built for theaters and things that can handle a lot of people. On at one time, so he installed that and then we have a connection that brings it all back to here, so we feed the internet. Um to that building, so and we've got a very good internet speeds here, so we can, we can definitely provide that to the. Citizens that are there.
And then during the last election, uh board of elections had the requirements that they. Uh wanted from you and and that went to perfect, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, no complaints, election went uh very smooth, I was on site uh during the whole thing, I was actually in the ballot room. Um overseeing in there, um but everything got uploaded just fine, no issues. Very smooth night, thankfully.
Thankfully.
Yeah.
We were prepared.
Yeah, yeah, we were there, we were on site, we were ready, um and you know, it's better to be over prepared than under prepared. For sure.
Good job. Then over the years, you you saw, you came in when we were, oh, had wires all over the place, the boxes all over the place.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was quite the mess when when I started here, but we're finally, I think. You know, everything's kind of more uh. Resolved in the backend, you know, everything's been cleaned up, things are pretty stable before, it was kind of duct tape and baling wire. Holding things together and now Trevor and I both, my assistant director Trevor and I, we both say we sleep better at night, a lot better now than we used to, so. Thankful for that.
Yeah, so of all your, so who are the people in your department and what are their specialties?
Yeah, so uh Trevor is my assistant director.
Trevor's last name is?
Dip Marsh, sorry, yeah, and he mostly oversees uh server infrastructure and uh systems administration. So any large changes to servers and computers, uh he's kind of the go to for that, uh he also manages our backups. Uh and then we've got Jared Laslow, he is our network administrator, he's also kind of our on off liaison with the sheriff's office. He he's been out there for quite a while, uh three days a week assisting out there. With various technology upgrades that we've done, uh and he handles everything on the networking side, uh so VPN access. Uh all the switchgear, firewalls, all that kind of security, uh he monitors and maintains. Uh the wiring, all that, and then we've got uh Blake Ward, he is our senior I T support specialist. And he's done a fantastic job, so most of the time when you call in, you'll either get uh Blake or Nick. Uh but Blake's our senior, he he's done a fantastic job, he mostly um does most of the support tickets. Uh deploys new computers, um that sort of thing helps us as we need for other tasks and projects. Uh he also goes out to the sheriff's office and rotates with Jared, uh we, and then we have Nick Hoover, he is our newest. I T support specialist, um he started in the fall and he has done a great job. He's been working primarily setting up the computers for the city, all those that came in. Uh also does password resets, all the I T support uh tasks that we need him to do. Uh we got Andrew Champlin, so our uh communications coordinator. And he's done a fantastic job, everything from audio visual to meetings, uh anything, Facebook, social media. Backing all that up, archiving it, uh he's our go to for for all that pictures, video.
Airport.
Yeah, he gets pulled in a lot of directions, but he's a, he's he's like a um. Yeah, he gets pulled in a lot of directions, but he's a, is, is like a, um, you know, uh, what do you call those? He's a handyman, I guess, he's Jack Paul trades.
And more importantly, you're all Lord of the Rings fans.
Yes, yeah, I think everyone in the office is a, a Lord of the Rings.
That's what I learned.
Yeah, uh, and then we have Mallory Poole, uh, she is our uh min- technical administrative assistant. She keeps us all in line, uh, all the tickets that come in through email or phone, all the uh. Support calls go to her and she gives them out to whoever's available. Or if it's a, you know, it's network issue, it'll go to Jared, if it's server issue, it'll go to Trevor, uh, she distributes all that out. Uh, same with the email tickets that come in, uh, she puts those out as needed. Uh, she also handed, handles most of, most of our purchase orders, um. And billing to the cities and the villages, she handles all of that. Uh, and then she also has been taking on like password resets and basic IT troubleshooting. She will take care of on the phone, uh, but she's done a fantastic job, has been a great asset to have her on board. To kind of keep some of those administrative tasks kind of out of uh off of the rest of our plate. So we can focus on technology needs as opposed to uh putting in, you know, purchase orders or placing orders, tracking orders. All that sorts of things she does for us, so she's been a fantastic asset.
And, and your office is able to, if I'm having a problem with my computer, you can come into, from your office into.
Yeah, so we can remote into all county city computers, um, we can just hop on remotely from our office. Take care of the problem, uh, it also, the software uh monitors for any issues that are coming up. Like, say you're running out of storage or uh your disk in your computer is failing or you need updates. It tracks all of that for us, um, and it'll fire a ticket off and tell us, hey, we need to look at this computer, it's having this problem. Um, it also uh monitors all of our antivirus assistance on all the county PCs and the city PCs. Make sure that's up to date, um, that there's no infected files or uh anything of that nature, so. It's quite, it's quite a robust piece of software, does a lot for us and makes our lives a lot easier than. Uh, I can't imagine if we had to walk to every computer or drive out to every office that was having a problem all the time. We would need five more people to do all that, so.
And a lot of transportation.
And a lot of transportation, the commissioner, you guys only have three cars, you know?
So is that the software and also will, will send us uh, um, uh, scan type mail?
So that's through, that's a company called No Before. They're probably the most widely used and well-known companies that's out there. Uh, for uh security training, so we have annual security training. A lot of that is required by the state now and most uh cybersecurity insurance requires that kind of training. It also sends out uh monthly test emails, like you're mentioning, that imitate. Um, someone trying to scam or gain access and it's to see whether users. Uh, click on it or whether they report it to us as an attempted scam.
Half a dozen since I've been here, emails from Duo, is that you?
Duo is our um, our multi-factor authentication provider, so they're what uh you get. You're the prompt like on your phone to log into your computer.
And I have not.
Yeah, so that's, that's required, we'll, we'll set you up.
I haven't done it either.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with you watching this, you're not gonna get us. Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll work with.
I figured you knew I did need IT going down here, congratulations.
We will get you enrolled in that, that is our multi-factor authentication, similar to what you use, you know, when you do banking and you log in, it's like, hey, go to your. App on the phone and approve it or put in a code, it's the same thing, uh, you can install an app on your phone, it'll have a prompt. You can get sometime, if you have a smartwatch, it pop up on your watch, you can hit approve. Uh, you can also get a phone call or a text message with a code and you can type that in. And you have to do that once per day when you first log in your computer, or if you're using a new computer, uh, you'll have to do that to gain access.
You have to do it once a day?
Yep.
Okay, I'm not just wondering.
Yeah, every time I log in, I, it sends it to my phone and I have to go to my.
And it gives you, it gives you eight hours, um, so you know, if you come in at eight and you leave at four, you only have to do it the one time. To log in, um, I always hate when I, I'll come in at seven thirty and I'll first do it. And then I log out, log back in at three thirty and I have to do it again, darn it. I shouldn't have logged out.
Every time you log in and out, you have to.
If you, if you have eight hour, you have an eight hour window, so you don't have to do it every time, but it's just.
It's like staying in a hotel, you have to review your.
Yep, yep, it's very similar, but it's uh, to make sure that if someone were to get into your account and let's say connect remotely. Uh, it would prevent them from logging in your computer and doing anything nefarious, so. Uh, and that is a very uh real risk, a very common occurrence. Uh, so we're doing everything in our power to prevent that. Most cybersecurity insurance is now required. Uh, multi-factor authentication even to get insurance for.
The reason I say it kind of looks at me, it says your organization, I'm like, really?
No, hey, I'd rather, I'd rather you be more skeptical than not, because we, we've definitely seen uh incidents where people have. Um, you know, clicked on things that they shouldn't have and had to clean up afterwards, so. Good to be cautious.
What, what kind of things are they looking for when they do that?
So they, there, it's a wide range, so a lot of it's called phishing, it's P H I S. And so, but it's.
Familiar with that, but.
Yeah, but it's basically, uh, you have real low level ones where they just send out, you know, blanket to thousands of people and it just. Maybe it looks like Microsoft or maybe it looks like Facebook or something iCloud. And it'll say, hey, you need to reset your password, click here and you click there and it'll ask for your current username and password. And then, but it'll take that information and now it has access to your iCloud, your email or whatever. Uh, other ones will be, uh, they call it spear phishing. And what spear phishing does is it's more of a targeted attack, so it looks up to see who you are. So someone on the other end is saying, okay, uh, Bill Purcell, I, I'm gonna impersonate you or I know that you're the commissioner and it'll say. You know, good morning commissioner, I need you to approve this transfer from the auditor's office. And it'll have you click, but it, it uses targeted information, it knows your position, it knows your email address, it knows your name, it knows.
Sounds reasonable.
It's, yeah, a lot more reasonable, it's a lot more targeted, uh, so anything uh fishy like that, you just have to look out for. Um, usually the email address will be incorrect, we have protections against that, um. We're saying, if someone tries to impersonate my name as like the sender of an email, but it doesn't use my actual email address. It'll actually get thrown out by our system because it knows like, hey, Kyle Webb always sends from this email address. And now we're sending it from a different one, that's probably not legitimate, um, so we have some protections against that, but. No system is foolproof, uh, but yeah, these, these kinds of attacks are wide ranging.
Apparently I haven't been here very long because I still get on the Outlook emails for here. It says, you don't all, you don't usually or often get emails.
Yeah, so the first time, the first time you usually receive an email from someone new, you will get that from Outlook. It's a new, newer thing that they put out and says, hey, you don't normally get emails from this person. Well, if you're new, you don't normally get emails from anyone, so that'll be the first time, but once you start conversing with someone. Uh, those will, those will go away, uh, but it is good in those cases where someone's impersonating someone else. And you're like, well, I always talk to Jason Booth, why would it say you don't usually get emails from this person?
Right.
That's your tell to be like, let me double check the email address and usually if they're scams, it'll be some. Random mix of letters and numbers at gmail dot com or Outlook or Yahoo or one of those. Um, and you'll know, okay, that's not really Jason, but that's pretty common.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Nice job, gentlemen, nice job.
Uh, next we should have Courtney, she's sitting out there.
Yeah, she's.
Courtney Lauer from uh Human Resources.
Morning, hello.
Courtney, thank you for editing me, thank you for the wonderful orientation.
Well, thank you, I appreciate the feedback. Okay, dive right in, shall we?
Yes.
I normally take the time on and during January's update to kind of recap what we've done in the last year. For you, so Bill, there should be no surprises for you, but uh maybe some new information for our new commissioners. Uh, so some of the twenty twenty-four highlights from the HR department, we were a part of two different audits. The first was National Web Check and that's the um fingerprinting equipment that we use upstairs. So they want to make sure that we're using the equipment appropriately, using the right codes when we submit those um background checks. And we pass that with no issues. And then also per record keeping audit, purpose the Public Employer Risk Reduction Program. Through Ohio Workers Comp and our record keeping was on point. We did get some uh great suggestions on how we might be able to improve our practices, even though there were no citations. So we've gone ahead and implemented those which included uh creating a comprehensive incident report form. That includes all of the perp-related uh data that they'd liked us to collect. If there's a work-related injury or illness, um, so we rolled that new form out last year. Um, we successfully took over the ACA ten ninety-five reporting. So uh Affordable, Affordable Care Act requires us to send out a ten ninety-five to employees who've had medical insurance. With the county and for how many months that they've had it, uh, you took a little box when you go to uh, you know, file your taxes. But then you have this form as backup information, uh, that was formerly, formerly done by our auditor's office. Uh, but we took that over last year with the help of SEMCO. And once again this year, we're going to be filing and sending those required documents. However, right at the end of the year, there was a few updates to the ACA. Which included a rollback kind of of the reporting guidance. So we're not required to provide every employee a paper copy of their ten ninety-five. We have to make it available if they request it, uh, because of the timing of the changing of the law. We decided status quo this year, we will make sure everyone gets that document. But it's something that we'll be looking at for next year because it certainly uh could be a cost savings to us. It costs us three dollars um to have SEMCO process and send those to each of our employees who qualify, so.
And, and SEMCO's our health provider for the county.
Correct, yes, the County Employee Benefits Consortium that we use for our medical benefits. Um, we instituted a workers' compensation policy, it's not something that we um had written out. But we uh developed that policy and added it to our personnel handbook, um, and participated in a couple of different events. To promote Knox County as uh an employer of choice. So WorkDev has an internship and career fair, they invite college-age students to that event. And we attended last year, it was held at Kennedy College and I just got the notification that they're going to be having another one this year. It'll be at the Nazarene College, so I'm sure we'll be signing up for that, so.
You get a pretty good response from that, Courtney.
Um, we have a few internship uh opportunities throughout the county. Uh, maybe not as robust as some employers, so we did um solicit resumes from those folks. And even just planting the seed of, you don't have to go far from your backyard to find a great employer, right? So uh, I find those uh events worthwhile to get, you know, get the word out about.
I actually had the numbers, so it was just at the meeting, they brought twenty local employers, thirty internships, sixty students attended. Yeah, I was at the ADF meeting, that's what I shared last night.
And I think that was the, maybe the first time that they had done, I'm not sure, their inaugural one, so uh hopefully that will be growing, right? Cause we will get more student and employer participation and uh Ohio means jobs. Uh, in conjunction with, I can't think of the organization right now, they, no, it wasn't WorkDev, it's um. They, they cater to younger students in giving them uh exposure to different career opportunities. Uh, they put on an event at the Energy Field House. And employers were to bring kind of hands-on, you know, things that kids could uh, you know, tangibly feel and touch. And, and uh make it more interactive from them, so they could explore different career opportunities.
Is that an aspect?
Not, yeah, it's not an aspect. And yes, thank you.
Twenty-two students did the program and it gave them uh exposure to lots of different job positions and things. Like you said, yeah, and experience.
Yes, there were uh a lot of students that came through that day and a lot of different careers that they could explore, but I think um. Some of the interesting thing they think, m- maybe government doesn't include, but we have nurses and dentists in the county. Uh, lawyers and you know, just an array of career opportunities that perhaps they didn't think about. Uh, but great way to um explain those to our. And they bust them in every, felt like every twenty minutes, we got a new busload of, of students through there, so.
Well, and they had cozing there, they had uh a lot of different um, you know, employers that's, yeah, it was good.
It was a great, great event, uh, we were right next to the uh Mountford and Fire Department. And they had a sledgehammer that they were letting kids, uh, so yeah, it was a, it was a really loud day for us, so. No, it was fun.
It's equal loud.
Yeah, well, yeah, that too, I guess, um, uh, so we helped uh the departments around the county. Uh, put together some training, um, and so we can facilitate those or source trainers. And so I wrote down some of the topics that we covered last year, uh, FMLA, reasonable suspicion training for supervisors. Mental health first aid, bloodborne pathogen, defensive driving, uh, cor- Corsa. Uh, does an annual training in which eighty, if eighty percent of all elected officials and department heads attend that. Yearly training, then we get a reduction or we get a reimbursement uh through Corsa for that. So I always encourage everybody to put that on their calendar, um. And the last year's topic was corrective action and then Andrea, the HR safety coordinator upstairs. Andrea Sellers, she's working with departments uh to have the sheriff's office come in and do Alice training, so run, hide, fight. We created a service award program for all county employees last year, so not something that we'd ever had before. Um, so we recognized employees at the five, ten, fifteen, twenty, you know, those five-year marks. Um, with certificates and county coins, so we're looking to um, you know, expand that program. Maybe different items for different levels of service, so if you have ideas or input on that, please let me know. I'd be happy to, happy to hear that, um. In accordance with Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, we have a fully equipped lactation room on the second floor. That any of our um employees or guests uh have available to use to them. Uh, we assisted in rolling out the employee portal along with the auditor's office. So employees can get their pay stubs uh online and they're all um held there. So they can go back and download them as they need them and we put out uh county information, updates on wellness and policy and things like that. We can do that through the portal, we're trying to make that a one-stop shop for our employees. So if they're looking for forms or information about benefits, they can go to the portal, click a link and it'll take them where they need to go. And one of the other biggest projects last year was starting a crisis communication plan. It was near the end of the year, we're working with a consultant to put that together. Uh, we have a team of uh county folks that are on our crisis team, including Knox Public Health. Of course, emergency management, IT, the sheriff's office, mental health and recovery. And just working on that crisis communication plan, so that we have our ducks in a row. If something were to happen, right, we have that communication ready that we can put the steps in place to make sure that our citizens, our employees. Uh, know what's going on and what steps that they need to take to keep themselves safe. I put in some statistics about where we are with staffing, as of yesterday, you have uh five hundred and ninety-one employees. That includes the thirteen elected officials, four hundred and eighty-one full-time employees, seventy-seven part-time and twenty seasonal. And that includes uh not just those under the Board of Commissioners, but all the elected. And that includes uh not just those under the Board of Commissioners, but all the elected official offices. And the standalone boards as well. So Knox Public Health, uh Board of D D, things like that. Um, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Um. Physicians posted to the website right now, three for J F S. Uh Transit is looking for both full-time and part-time drivers. Water Waste Water is interviewing right now for maintenance technician. We have an assistant public defender position open, uh and the Sheriff's Office is looking for patrol deputies. And the three at J F S uh eligibility referral specialists. Those are case managers that work in our public assistance. Division along with a business services specialist who is out at Ohio Maintenance Jobs. So those are the ones that are posted to the county website that we're looking for great talent to join our team. We asked the applicants when they fill those forms out online uh where they've heard about our job. Uh, and so I added in uh most recently, the data is telling us that a lot of them are coming from Indeed. Ohio Means Jobs, which is great local resource. Uh, the county website, social media, word of mouth, and then professional association websites. So we can post our jobs to like the County Commissioners Association website. So that anyone throughout the state of Ohio could see those county jobs.
Is that in the order that's?
Correct. Yes. So Indeed was the 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 leader in when how they heard about our jobs. So within the last, since the last time that I was down, um we've done five interviews. But they were up there on the phones already making more interviews for Knox County Transit as well as the Water Department this morning. So. We'll have more to add to that. Our office assisted in onboarding twenty. New employees within the last month and then we off-boarded ten. And then I always like to do just a little bit of a wrap-up of the whole year. Uh, so we interviewed a hundred and fifteen. Um, folks in twenty twenty-four, assisted in onboarding ninety-three new employees. And we're part of the offboarding for eighty-seven employees. So the onboarding, um our level of involvement. Depends on the department. So for say. Department of Developmental Disabilities or Public Health, our portion of it is making sure we get the insurance enrollment forms processed. Um, but for say the Sheriff's Office, we do um the onboarding, some of the onboarding paperwork for them in addition to the insurance. So their level of involvement changes, I think, depending on how much a department wants to use our. Our resources. And then. Um, F M L A cases, our administering of those cases just keeps increasing as. Departments call on us to do that for them and we are more than happy to do it. Um, but last year we processed sixty-six family medical leave. Uh, cases, which is the most we've done since the inception of the H R Department. And we're currently monitoring twenty-four active. Cases with the department.
Yeah, I know that before we had an H R department. Every elected official's office was taking care of the family medical leave uh scenarios and. We were concerned that they weren't being very consistent. Uh, with following the rules and regulations and therefore the uh H R department is. Has done a wonderful job with making sure that we do it right and protects the county liability-wise. Uh, against doing stuff wrong. And so we, Courtney's done done an excellent job. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Do you have any?
Big job, Courtney.
It is a big job. It's a big job. And I have um an amazing team. I'd be remiss if I um didn't. Didn't give a shout out. Pam Schaefer, she's our benefits coordinator and Andrea Sellers. Our safety coordinator. They both come with um expansive county experience. Um, and different dispec- perspectives, one from the auditor's office, another from the court system. And in mine is purely an H R lens. And so when we get together, we see it three different ways. And we talk about it and um I'm always learning something from them, that's for sure. Uh, but it really does, it really does take all of us. Nice. This is not a one-person. Job, that's for sure. So I'm very grateful, very grateful for them.
And you've gotten better. You you started in a hole in the wall. So. Little bit bigger holes.
Indeed, yes, thank you. Our the space that we started out in was um as part of what A I T is now. And um we moved to the back of the second floor and have more room to, you know, have people in and actually have a table where they can sit. And we can help them with paperwork or logging on to their portal or what have you. So we're grateful for that. Thank you. Even I appreciate. Uh, Mister Booth's support um of our department as well. So. Questions, concerns, feedback, things that we can be working on, doing better, helping out.
Looks great to me.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. Also, you're welcome. All right. Have a great day.
Yes, thank.
Thank you.
You were telling Julie. Would you, Carol was gonna use our conference room. Do you wanna let her know that Julie's here? I think she wanted to come in for your way.
And I was like, wait, I have to remember what I'm talking about today. Hi, how are you Julie? I'm good. I think we've met before. Yeah, yeah. We have an audience. I drew an audience. You know, I'm working part-time at the Y and um. I see everybody there, so it's it's kind of fun.
But just so you know, Julie, you you are live on T V right now.
Oh, I am?
Yes.
Thanks for telling me. Oh, so, how's it going?
Yeah, so you were in the head of the uh senior levy.
Yeah, senior levy today. Um, yeah, that's why I had to remember why I was coming in. So um I don't know how much you know about the senior levy that's on the ballot. It'll be up again in twenty twenty-six, actually. Pretty sure, right?
I believe it is, yeah.
Um, it's a, you know, it's a levy-funded uh ser- or funding. That serves Knox County residents sixty years of age and up. So only Knox County and sixty years of age and up. And the ballot language, as much ballot language is, is pretty generic, pretty general. But the commissioners at the time when the levy was first instituted. Determine that what they wanted to do with it was to be able to pro- provide services and programming. Um, that helped keep people independent in whatever their setting is. So you could have somebody, as far as I'm concerned and the way we read it. Somebody could live at home and we try to keep them independent at home, healthy and independent at home. Maybe they live in assisted care, but. They can get out, you know, or they're independent care and they can get out. And and, you know, go to programming or go to um meals is a a big one. Carol, come on. Um, and that, and so it wasn't that the commissioners wanted to own that. It was what can we do in the community? So then the. Funding was made available to any organization in the community that's a nonprofit. So they have to be a nonprofit or they have to have an arm that's a nonprofit. And um, you know, then it was a matter of the commit- initially, I believe it was the commissioners. Um, and you weren't even here when it was first instituted.
May not even sure if I was born.
So I think the commissioners were just deciding where the funding would go. And um it. Then later, in in the last, I think, ten years, when Teresa and Tom are here. Um, they determined that it might be better if they weren't the three making the decision. You know, or making the recommendation on the funding because as in rural community, you're gonna get tied to different organizations and. That kind of thing. And so we don't want to have any conflict. Or the commissioners didn't at the time. So they recruited some folks, community folks to head what. What's called the SLAB, the Senior Levy Advisory Board. All right, it's it's more of a committee. I see you over there.
Well, considering it's senior, it is a little.
Yeah, Senior Levy Advisory Board, um even though it's more of a committee. And I don't know how many people were on the last committee when I wasn't involved. Uh, we currently have seven. So I I was asked by Teresa as soon in twenty twenty-two, when I told her I was retiring. She hit me up to coordinate the Senior Levy Board. So it was just brought back in twenty-two. And it was because of the same thing. They came to a point where so many people are applying for this money. And bills tied to different agencies and Tom and Teresa were, you know, and so it became. Um, a little bit more comprehensive review and people from the community really looking at the funding. Um, so we have seven currently. Um, and it's been a work in progress. Jason Penny's the best, you know, she's my buddy. Jason says so, but you know, he's been helpful too. Uh, in in trying to establish criteria. So this year we have nine agencies applying for. I I don't have them out right in front of me, but it's it's um one, just over one million, just over one million. And years ago, when they were bringing in big money like that. There were only three or four agencies or five applying and it was easier to distribute the money. You know, maybe it was the bigger organization or they saw more people or. And now it's becoming a little bit of a a nightmare, honestly, because we have. Great organizations doing great work and we've got to make the recommendations to you. Of where we think funding ought to go.
Are those people asking for X amount of dollars or is that?
Yeah, so I I can give you, for instance, so. The mi- we changed it so the minimum anybody can apply for is ten thousand dollars because we were getting like little. Two, three, four thousand dollar grant application. And and not that they weren't worthy, but it was mostly like capital. We want to replace the floor. We want to, and so we felt that that doesn't really benefit. What the mission or it doesn't meet the mission of the of the levy. So it has to be ten thousand dollars or more. Um, the biggest agencies that uh apply are the senior groups that you know about. So uh Station Break. Centerburg Senior, Frederictown Seniors, the Sanctuary in Danville. Um, those are the ones that have been funded. The majority of the money in the past. And things are shifting. We didn't, um, I think we funded. Uh, Station Break at the same or a little bit less last year. Um, and then we cut Centerburg too, bec- just because more people are asking for the money. So. It's been the committee who I have great committee members and I can tell you who they are in a moment, but. Um, as a coordinator, it wa- it it was, and I've worked with grants my entire profession. So it was. We've got to come up with the standard that we want them to meet. And one of the ones that wasn't being met was people weren't tracking that they were Knox County residents. Or that they were over si- sixteen. So we had numbers coming in that looked real good, but they weren't necessarily. The money wasn't flowing to seniors. It was flowing to just whoever they were serving at the time. No fault of their own. They probably didn't understand it, but you know, it wasn't looked at. Um, so now that's it. That's one of the big ones. Um, for them. They know that they have to track it. They have to prove to us how they figure out somebody's from Knox County. And how they prove they're sixty or over. So um, that's that's the biggest criteria. The next one is. How does your work prove to us how your work actually keeps people independent? And there's, there's a lot of stuff out there that will tell you it keeps uh people in their home. But um a lot of it's like, it could be health and wellness. It could be nutrition, like the meals and and that includes socialization. Um, and then it could be as much as home care or um chores, you know, uh chore service where people mow lawns or. A service mows lawns, that kind of thing. So it it runs the gamut. Um, is what they'll apply the mon- or ask for the money for. But um, it's. It's been a really nice process to work with this committee to try to. Um, you know, come up with a strategic, critical thinking kind of plan to make sure these, the the agencies understand. We only have so much money and you need to prove to us why we should fund you. And I say that like I'm the, I'm the decider, but the bottom line is. When when I send or bring the recommendations into you, you all are the ones that decide. Last year was the first year they cha- the commissioners changed things up a bit when on the recommendations we made. We worked through it. It was fine, but um we're only making recommendations to you. The three of you decide. If you want to follow our recommendations or you want to fund, you know, an agency in a different amount than what we recommend to you.
So you're already vetting them before they come to.
Yeah, so there's a application and I'm sure Penny can get a copy to you. Um, we revised the application to try to streamline things. Make people answer questions that are more strategic and critical to the mission of the levy. Um, so they fill out application. It's actually due Friday. Yeah, I know they're all working on them because I've had questions, but we'll get applications. The seven of us will review them. And then we come together. It's, I think we're coming together fourteenth of February. And we'll score them out. We'll have a conversation about it. We'll talk, talk it through. Some of us know. Agencies more than others do, you know, just how they work and that kind of thing. Um, and then we s- we score it. We talk about the money. Do we give them what they wanted? Do we give them less? You know, who gets what? And then we make the recommendation to you. We also do site visits. We have one already. We're making one today. Um, as many members of SLAB that can be there, uh go. So we can actually see what they're doing, kind of feel it out, maybe ask questions to the. People who um run the the program. Uh, but there's seven of us and as coordinator, I guess my, I felt like my role was. Of course, as a health commissioner too, you know, I I knew that we need to be respectful of not just Mount Vernon City, which has Station Break. But but the four corners. So I, what I've done is try to get individuals from all four corners and we have successfully done that now. Um, so I have um Jim Wagner from Frederictown. He's pretty well-known up there. Um, I have um gentleman by the name of Ron Roberts, who is a transplant to Centerburg area and real interested and and just. Trying to stay up to date on what's going on in the community, but a really good guy. Um, I have uh Donald York. He's a. There, I think most of us are retired, except one. Um, he's a retired corrections pastor. Um, he has an interesting life story, but uh. He's representing Mount Vernon and he was just new to the community as well and wanted to get involved. And so he, he's pretty objective at this point. Still, he's only been here like three or four years. Um, then we have Denny Dugan. He's a township trustee out of Clay. Uh, Matt Schwartz is from Bladensburg, but they both know the east side of the county, so they represent. Danville and and down in Marcusburg in that area. How many is that? And then myself, who's kind of the whole, because I've had the opportunity. I was blessed to be able to, you know, see the whole county. Um, I was six.
Yes.
Oh, who my, oh, Deb Beck, sorry. Uh, the only other female. Deb Beck is a social worker who works in on, has worked around. Geriatric. She works for hospice right now. Um, and she's somebody I knew. She lives in outside of the city. But yeah, so that's the seven of us. Is that right, Cheryl?
Prior commissioners put that community together. That's what was really what we tried to do was they wanted to make sure we we. Kind of got someone from all the corners of the county. Um, and obviously Julie's experienced to kind of. Bring it all together. Um, but I think what Julie hit on that was really, and Bill, you could speak to this too, why the commissioner decided to create the committee. Was we, the commissioners also, they would submit applications to Penny and I. We would kind of compile and give them to the commissioners. They would review them. But you're just reading an application. They're actually going out to the locations. They're actually bringing them in at times. To answer questions. I think it's a much better process.
Yeah, we started a technical, we call it technical advisory session. We encourage them all to come in so we can emphasize what the mission is and what we need and. That I always tell them, it's not my fault if you don't get funded. It's their fault. Now, I uh, they know that we make the recommendations and then you look at them. And we hope that you follow them. I mean, that's our goal, right, for everybody? But um, yeah, sometimes things have to change. Um, the visits um. Are good, like I said, and and we, everybody is being visited this year. So that's good. We weren't able to do that last year, but somebody from the committee will be visiting. One of the sites at least. So, what questions?
I was gonna ask, do you bring those to us? Uh, what much does it happen?
Well, hopefully it'll be like the end of February, the very end, because the funding starts in April. It's a weird, yeah, but it starts in April. So we. We cut it close, I think, the first year. And that, it's tough for you, the the.
Now, you got your process dialed in. Has anybody been turned down? Now, you got your process dialed in, has anybody been turned down?
Yes, but not big money, um and and last year, like I said, we reduced funding. I, you're gonna get questions this year, because we're gonna have to reduce funding to people or not fund people. I, it's something's gonna have to happen, and we don't have as much money to work with, and from what I can tell and what I know of the agencies, they all are doing great work. We're really gonna have to buckle down on. The independent at home, what is this really doing, is this what the money's supposed to be spent for, you know, so.
Yeah, because there is, as Julie just said, even when it was being done in our office, yeah, every year. The asks are typically greater, and the money's, that at best they fly.
Yeah.
Um, so. So do they know your budget amount, Julie, and then they?
They don't, they've never asked me.
They just ask for X and then.
Well, they they kind of know when we do the report. Um, we'll tell them we have, we anticipate one point.
Okay, so they get an estimation.
Well, they have uh, it the, when we send that out, do it in our minutes, um voting. On that, it'll say we estimate this month, they'll get their money, but they don't get the last month or last quarter. Until we know what the tax, tax receipts are, because we we can't give out more money than.
Yeah, there have been times that fourth quarter payment has to be reduced, because the levy didn't bring in what was anticipated. But I think the last couple of years, that that hasn't been an issue, but we always tell them it can't happen, I mean, when they sign off.
Uh yeah, I think the ones that have been funded know that, I'm not sure about the new ones, um but, I mean, most of the places applied. Depend on grants anyways, that they're kind of familiar with. Sometimes when I just got emailed a day on board, I'm on and we're getting cut two hundred thousand dollars because of the government cuts being made at the Fed level. And it's really a shame, um because the, one of them's on rape crisis, so the. The lady, the the ladies that go out and help rape victims are not gonna be there, um but anyway, that's off the subject, so.
Um, and then you start out by saying Centerburg got cut, as I remembered. Centerburg asked for more money, but they got the same amount of money as they did the previous year.
Yes, it may, that may be right, Bill, you may be right, I know we got a question on that, for sure, um and and I mean, we. They want to know, what can we do different, and we we just tell them, you know, we need to make sure that you're doing what you say you're gonna do, and you can prove it. And that's been the the sticking point, is most of them have difficulty proving it. Um, um Bill's real familiar with Center for Hu- Center for Hope and in Bladensburg, and. They see a lot of people, I think they do a lot of good work, but she she struggled with, how do we get the om- you know, how do we know about the homage? I said, the homage know how to prove that they're from Knox County. It's not like they don't have something in their pocket, I know that for a fact, that they can prove, and they can also prove how old they are. But um you know, it's it's a nightmare to try to do it, I'm not faulting her that, but. So that they've had to come up with a way that they can, you know, um make sure that they're counting those folks as well. And they were serving Licking County folks were going there as well, so that's, that was an issue, you know, it's like.
Well, shocks and cats, you too, I think.
Yes, but I I mean, that's, that's it in a nutshell, it's been an interesting um. Journey for me, and I did tell um Jason uh that I won't be coordinating it for next year. Um I I am still considering, I might stay on the committee, but I don't want to coordinate it, so.
What if we double your salary?
Yeah, could you do that?
Yeah, yeah.
My husband always says, do you remember him waved at the Y? Close, but yeah, um, yeah, so we're working on that, I don't know if we'll have a committee member will step up or not, but I'll try to talk somebody.
Well, we we appreciate, you know, because it it was an intense work that needed to get done.
Yeah, yeah.
Thinking about all the different personalities that would need to to talk about the ideas. What their levy really meant, and you did a.
Well, it's hard to stay, you know, I, uh so, just for instance, you heard me say I work at the Y, well, the Y has applied this year, I know they're applying. So I won't look, I won't review the, you know, I won't review the application, I don't know for sure what, I think I know. But I don't know for sure what they're applying for, so I don't want anything to do with that application, and that happened last, last year for me. And it's only because I've been around, is that what I want to say? Um, but for instance, Knox Public Health's nonprofit arm applies. And so I stepped back from that now, I've been uh far enough removed from it now, but you know, I didn't want to influence that. So it's, it's can be a difficult thing in a rural community, because somebody has an opinion about something. I mean, they all know something about one of the organizations, so.
So what do you do at the Y?
Uh, I'm the front desk, I I'm your receptionist. At the Y, yeah, yeah.
Probably saw my brother there a lot.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, well, did, did.
I did, well, there's a lot of lesters that come in.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um anyway, that's it, unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Did I cover it all, Penny? She probably knows more about than me.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, you're welcome.
You'll be able to go on the website later on and see how well you did.
Do you, do you really think I care? Yeah, now I'll probably be back too to talk to you about housing, uh because I'm coordinating that too, and that's of interest to many, many folks.
Did you, did you have anything that you wanted to share on camera?
But we have uh the few resolutions uh to do. We do, we do. So we need to formally approve the bid and contract documents for the county engineer, and this is the pavement marketing project for twenty twenty five. Contributing pavement for eighty thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and forty cents.
Is it eighty eight or eighty?
Eighty, eighty. Nine hundred ninety dollars and forty cents. A motion to approve.
In news and papers, say aye.
Bill, there's a whole bunch of things on here, you'll have to sign, I've got one spot I need to sign, so. There's news. And then we have an independent contractor agreement with the sheriff's office and uh the Laney Green Social Worker Services. So, this kind of came up to my attention, that actually was signed by someone at the sheriff's office in December. And they didn't have the authority to sign this, so got the chip reviewed, it's all good, but commissioners need to adopt and approve. And sign.
I'll take a motion.
Oh, motion?
Barry?
Read one second. Let's see this.
Five seconds. Any, all those papers, say aye.
And then we have approved the experience agreement for credit reports, this is relating just to job family services. And their foster youth program, and they have to have this in place on how they use the information. Um and there's a, looks like one spot that they should be summoned, actually, all three of you, I need to sign this one.
Okay, so take a motion, a motion of group. I'll do some papers, say aye.
Just a couple of things that I have for you from Miami, let's pass this down, the city of Mount Vernon sent me a letter, they just wanted you to be aware of. That, you know, we're partnering with the city for the Fairgrounds Road. Uh water main, sanitary sewer, and stormwater control. Uh resurfacing, all that's being done out there, they're holding a public meeting in that Morris Township Hall on February third at six. At six o'clock, to kind of just answer any questions that the residents have, but there is, I believe. Um, Bill, there, let me make sure I say this right. Yeah, so sanitary sewer will be available to a limited number of homes on Fairgrounds Road. And then if you're, if they're interested, they can contact the city or go to the public page for more information, so. So I just wanted to pass that along, so you're aware of it.
Yeah, and that was part of that discussion when we gave in Arpa money, right, that uh they were wanting to have everyone. Post-grad, we said, no, that's unacceptable, and I think they came to what, there are only two people that they thought needed that. We accept they could do the water.
And we, I think our contribution was seven hundred thousand dollars roughly from Arva to that seven hundred twenty, somewhere in there. For to go towards this project, so just so you have that. Um also, I just wanted to, during the, I did talk to Chip, and he, to come down at some point and go over. The contract language, you had asked me to talk to him about, come down to maybe give us an overview of the new changes in the law and that. Contracting, um as well as some other updates that affect the county and the commissioner's office. That was in that ominous bill that was approved in January by the legislature, by the governor, so he's, we're gonna get him on the calendar to come down. And do all of that.
That just might be helpful to business people too, sitting up front with how to do it, and we go in and.
And then the last thing is, uh Todd and I are having a meeting this week with modern builders, and we're gonna kind of lay out a. A plan, which this, I'll send you an email, but this is kind of laid out of how we're going to. Have to shut off the back of the building during the north entry project. Um, once that is shut off back there, there'll be no access to the back of the building, it'll be a work site, it'll be fenced off with. With orange fencing, or you're gonna have to get some signage and things, the ADA entrance to the building will be our side entry. But we did take care of that last year, there is a a button there that opens the door. So we'll probably need to maybe set up some cones or something for some additional ADA parking in in our main lot. During that time, but the back entrance will be completely. Unaccessible, inaccessible at that point in time, so it's, we're looking at sometime in March, weather dependent. That that's gonna start happening, and they're thinking four to six months, that could be that way, so it's.
They already did the water.
The water, we're doing that on February fourth, they're gonna scope all of that, and get us that information. But it'll certainly be an inconvenience to occupants of the building as well as the public. But we will have Andrew do the best he can, and we're gonna get signage and information up as best we can, that, that'll be no access. Because they're gonna be cutting some concrete up, you know, taking off some stuff, it's just not gonna be safe to let people be back there. So the elevator will still be open and accessible from inside the building, but we won't let it. Let them go down to the first floor now, so. Anyway, they'll get you more information, but we're having a meeting this week with them to kind of lay all of that out as well. And then Penny has a set of minutes for you to approve, and there's two transfers in the build list as well that need signed off.
So. Brandon, Barry, you have anything you wanna share?
Just that I attended the A B S uh annual award dinner last night, and uh it's really good. And how um learned a little bit more about how the way they work in the community to help drive business and uh to bring. Drive uh housing workers and everything so that we can attract new businesses to the area. Yep, he said, what can we do, we turn one dollar into fourteen dollars, so. And so they take the money that was invested in community and help to bring business here, so they create some other jobs and revenue and taxes. And all those things that help drive the community.
Were you there, sure? Barry, do you have anything?
I have nothing, sure.
Yeah, uh I don't have anything I need to share this time, so we will stay in adjourned. I have a motion.
A motion to adjourn.
Second, and we stay in adjourned this time, thank you.